We can get.
Okay, welcome to this special meeting of the Planning Commission this Tuesday evening, October 11th, for the Brown Act training. The regular Planning Commission meeting will commence at 7:00 PM. I now call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Mary, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Williams.
Present.
Vice Chair Abner.
Present.
Commissioner Nugent.
Here.
Commissioner Patel.
Here.
Commissioner Wiggins.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, good evening and welcome. We're happy to be here in person with options for virtual participation as well. And as usual, there are three ways to participate this evening. For those attending in person, there are three options to sign up to speak. Number one, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. Number two, sign in using the iPad at the back of the council chamber. Or number three, scan the QR code to sign up, which is on a sign located at the back of the chamber. If participating remotely, use your, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, then press star six to unmute yourself. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Okay. The only item for this special meeting that we're having at 6 o'clock is the Brown Act training for the Planning Commission. Are there any speakers at this time that would like to address the commission?
There are no speakers at this time.
Okay, great. If not, then we can turn it over to the city attorney to present.
Great, thank you very much and good evening. I am Prasanna Rosiah. I am the city attorney and I'm pleased to present you with this training, which we try to do once a year for the Planning Commission. We also extend this opportunity for members of other boards and commissions at a, at a separate time and place. So first, let's talk about what is the goal of the Brown Act. As you see on the slide, the goal is to promote transparency and public trust. And the Brown Act was enacted in the 1950s. There's an interesting history behind it, if you care to ever look into it. But in the Brown Act, it refers to the conduct of the people's business. And the intent of the Brown Act is that actions of public boards and commissions, city council, be taken openly, that their actions be taken openly, and that deliberations occur openly, so that the public knows what its government is doing. So the core Brown Act requirements apply to legislative bodies that hold meetings. And in those circumstances, it requires an agenda, so that the public knows what business is going to be transacted at that meeting, such as tonight. So the Brown Act covers elected bodies, such as the city council, and it also covers appointed bodies, such as the Planning Commission or other boards and commissions appointed by the council. But it also goes further. It applies to standing committees. So what's a standing committee? It's less than a quorum of the whole that has either a continuing subject matter jurisdiction or a fixed meeting schedule, usually established by some formal action. So for example, if the Planning Commission were to establish a committee to examine some particular policy issue on an ongoing basis, or had a fixed meeting schedule, then that subcommittee could very well be subject to the Brown Act and all of its requirements. And the same thing happens for the council, too. The council has standing subcommittees, and those meetings are subject to the Brown Act. Some of those subcommittees might have two members, doesn't matter. The Brown Act will still apply in those situations. And then interestingly, the Brown Act also applies to council members elect by statute. So once an election occurs, if it's clear that a candidate has been elected, the Brown Act applies to that person. Now, it doesn't expand the quorum of the legislative body, but that, that council member elect is expected by statute to conform their conduct to the Brown Act. By the way, let me just pause here for a second, and, and I want to emphasize that you should feel free to ask questions during my presentation. Just turn your microphone, just raise your hand. I don't want to just be lecturing at the Planning Commission for an hour like that. That's, that's no fun. I mean, it may be helpful, but it's even more helpful if it's more interactive. So just jump in if you have questions, because if you have a question, others will likely have the same question. Okay, so what is a meeting? So a meeting is any congregation of a majority of the members of a legislative body, like the Planning Commission, at the same time and place to hear, discuss, or deliberate on any item that's within their subject matter jurisdiction. So when the Brown Act was created in the 1950s, you know, before obviously social media, the internet, email, it contemplated physical locations. Now, the Brown Act has evolved over time, and I'll get to that later in the presentation. So it now addresses social media. But the basic idea is if you have three members of the Planning Commission sitting around a table somewhere outside of the noticed public meeting to talk about city business, that's a Brown Act problem. And of course, that would never happen. Okay, so meetings are not just this meeting right here. It includes retreats, workshops, sometimes, for example, at the beginning of the year, the city council has a workshop about strategic priorities for the city, right? So that's a meeting, subject to the Brown Act. You have to allow public comment, comment, there's an agenda that comes out. So the Brown Act applies in those situations. And, you know, informal gatherings can be meetings, three members of the Planning Commission sitting around at a coffee shop, that can be a meeting under the Brown Act. And also, yes, go ahead. I see, I see someone, Adam leaning over with a question.
Yes, so when you say that can be, does that mean it is or isn't?
I'll, I'll explain in a little more detail. So if you're, if three members of the Planning Commission are sitting together talking about, you know, say, the last 49er game, that is not a meeting of the Planning Commission. You're not talking about city business. But, you know, you just have to be careful about what you're actually talking about. But also, it's important to keep in mind a public perception, too. Even if you're not talking about city business, if three members of the Planning Commission are observed together, talking, the public doesn't know what you're saying. They don't know that it may not be a Brown Act meeting. But understanding and appreciating how the public could perceive that situation is, is also very important, even if it may not be an actual Brown Act violation. Yes?
Prasanna, thank you. The, I've seen legal standards before where the appearance of something is material legally. And are you saying it's, it's a, it's, it potentially is material if there's a, a public perception? Or is it just not advisable, in terms of the public not knowing what three members of the Planning Commission are talking about?
It's not advisable. But even the perception can lead to, say, public consternation and can, can lead to sort of calls for certain individuals or bodies to quote, "look into" the situation. And, you know, that, that can be, you know, it's something important to try and steer far away from because of that public perception. So it's not necessarily material, it's more something that is inadvisable because of that public perception. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Okay. Yes?
I have a sort of unrelated thing, but sort of related. There are two people that were trying to enter, and then they went that way, and I think I heard the door, and then they looked back in just now, and then they went that way. Is this a public meeting that we?
This is most definitely a public meeting, so if the front, if the front door is, yeah, okay.
They tried the door, I think.
We will check. Staff is checking the door.
Okay.
But thank you for mentioning that. We'll just pause for a moment.
I'm thinking, well, we're not being very transparent if they can't get in. Oh, okay.
Okay, good news, it's, the doors are open, so, okay.
They were trying to get their leaf.
Yeah, I think they were.
Okay, continuing on. So there are also such things as serial meetings, which I'll, I'll get to in the next slide. So that can be by personal intermediary, can be by telephone, by email, by social media even. So serial meetings are also problematic under the Brown Act. So here's a few different situations to consider. One is the daisy chain situation. So Commissioner A talks to Commissioner B, who speaks to Commissioner C. So now you have a quorum of the Planning Commission when, where, if you are speaking about business within the subject matter jurisdiction of, the Brown Act has a legislative body. I think it's, it's, the better approach is just city business. If those three individuals talk about a city business, then it could be a Brown Act problem. Most certainly, it certainly would be if it's within the subject matter jurisdiction of, of the Planning Commission. Another situation besides daisy chain is the hub and spoke. So Commissioner A talks to Commissioner B, and then Commissioner A talks to Commissioner C, same situation or similar situation. You have three members, a quorum of the Planning Commission, that would be speaking outside of a notice public meeting. So that's a Brown Act problem. Also, responding to emails. So of course, individuals have a constitutional right to petition their government, right? And sometimes, they will email the entire legislative body. That is not a Brown Act problem. However, if you reply to all, to that email, you will then have communicated with a quorum of the legislative body outside of a notice public meeting. So that is a Brown Act problem. So I like to say to members of legislative bodies, reply to all is not your friend. So if you just remember that, you can always hit the, use the forward button if you need to respond to the person who sent the email. Just something important to keep in mind, to not reply to all whenever possible. It's a question?
Through the chair? Prasanna, there's been one question that has, has interested me for quite a while with the Brown Act, and the subcommittee statement kind of brought it to my forefront again. So, for instance, there, for the GPS Subcommittee, there's, I think, two city council members, two planning commissioners, and other associated folks with or without the city, and which are open to the public. So that means I can see the broadcast, or I can attend the meetings. So is the Brown Act an act that is in place, so more than two, more than two commissioners or council members cannot relay their feelings about a subject matter prior to a legislative meeting?
So if you're referring to, so we're just keeping to the general plan Subcommittee context, if you have, you know, a quorum of that legislative body communicating outside of a notice public meeting, regardless of if they're members of the Planning Commission, members of the city council, whatever other body they sit on, if a quorum of that legislative body is communicating outside of a notice public meeting regarding city business, then that could be a Brown Act problem.
So, so my question is, excuse me, see me one second. My question is, is that I know the input of other commissioners prior to us coming to the dais. So I thought that was the reason for the Brown Act, that I didn't under, I didn't know how my other commissioners felt or were, were leaning on a legislative process. That's why it's always kind of confused me, where I do know what they have said and how they feel. So how does that work with the Brown Act, or is there, there's just no connection?
No, so your, your observation of a meeting of the General Plan Subcommittee is, is not a violation of the Brown Act. You're just watching a meeting, you know, of another legislative body. So, you know, that, that in and of itself doesn't present a, a problem under the Brown Act. It's just, it's really nothing more than hearing and seeing what they, what they are discussing within the subject matter jurisdiction of, of that body. Now, it may be that a particular item may also come to, you know, the SNI Committee and the Planning Commission, you know, and, and the city council. So you, you may have already heard what those maybe other members of the Planning Commission have said, who also happened to sit on the General Plan Subcommittee. But that's not, that doesn't constitute your communication with them outside of a notice public meeting. You're just watching a broadcast.
So does a commissioner or council member who is not on this, on this Subcommittee, do they have the ability to participate in that meeting?
I think, you know, whenever you have legislative bodies that are made up of members of other legislative bodies, I think you have to be careful, because, you know, if you have a quorum, let's just say of the Planning Commission, say, a third member who then starts participating in that meeting, then it can raise questions as to whether that meeting should also be noticed as a meeting of that other legislative body as well.
I'm sorry, I didn't frame that properly. What I'm saying is if the Subcommittee is in, at a meeting, can the commissioner or, or council member participate as a public member?
Yeah, and what you're saying is that perhaps that should have been then noticed as a Planning Commission meeting. I mean, that raises that question.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to that example in, in just a little bit, so maybe, maybe that'll answer your question a little bit more. So let me continue on, but we can turn back to your question. Commissioner Patel, did you have a question or no? Okay.
I was just gonna note that the General Plan Subcommittee meetings are noticed public hearings, which might also factor into that as well. So anybody can come observe what is said, including other members of other legislative bodies.
Correct. So here are some exceptions, one of which, you know, I think may address your question. So again, context with constituents. If a constituent, you know, emails the entire Planning Commission, that is not a violation of the Brown Act. If the Planning Commission goes to the Planning Commissioners Academy, which is encouraged, that is not a violation of the Brown Act, but there's a big caveat, which I'm gonna get to in a moment. If there's, that conference has to be open to the public. Or if there's a community meeting, open to the public, or some social or ceremonial event, such as groundbreaking, ribbon cutting, or even a meeting of another legislative body, that is not necessarily a meeting under the Brown Act. But say, the members of the Planning Commission all attend a groundbreaking, that is not a meeting, as long as a quorum does not discuss amongst themselves matters within your subject matter jurisdiction. So, you know, the groundbreaking example, the attendance at a conference, you know, the League of California Cities Conference, you know, those are, those are common instances where members of legislative bodies will, will go to those events. So it's just important by statute that those members that make up a quorum not discuss amongst themselves matters that fall within their subject matter jurisdiction. And to take meetings of other legislative bodies, say, if there's a city council meeting, and the Planning Commission, like all, let's say, three members of the Planning Commission were there in the audience, that does not, that not, is not in and of itself a Brown Act violation. It's an open meeting of the, of the city council, but the members of the Planning Commission in attendance cannot discuss amongst themselves matters within the Planning Commission's jurisdiction. However, you know, if there is a, you know, on, on the agenda itself, say, discusses, say, say you're going to the Planning Commissioners Academy, right? And maybe, you know, one or say, two members of the Planning Commission make a presentation as part of the program of the Planning Commissioners Academy that says, hey, here's something that we actually, you know, encountered. You know, there, there is an exception for that, but it's, it's, it's very narrow, and it's unlikely to occur. But I think the takeaway here is that mere attendance of a quorum of a legislative body at another legislative body's meeting is not necessarily a Brown Act violation. It's, you have to be careful to not discuss amongst yourselves matters that are within your subject matter jurisdiction. Yes?
Prasanna, what if we all give public comment? And the other, those other commissioners hear our public comment in relation to an item that's within our, our subject matter jurisdiction? Would that change things? Or are you just saying we can't sort of have an aside in the hallway and talk about things?
You know, that, that's a.
I don't mean to ask bizarre questions either, but.
No, it's, it's, it's not a bizarre, it's not a bizarre question. I was really referring to more that, you know, you have to be, it's more the latter situation, where you can't gather, you know, go off to the side and then, you know, have a conversation. But, but even that, even the comments by a quorum of the Planning Commission can be a problem, too. Because let's just say there's a matter that is going to be coming to the Planning Commission, you know, at a later date, and that meeting, you know, it wasn't noticed as a meeting of the Planning Commission, then if all of a sudden, you have a quorum of the Planning Commission discussing at public comment, something that is going to be coming before the Planning Commission later, then that also could be a problem, and I wouldn't recommend it.
Could I follow up with one quick question on that?
Yes.
So if an item has already been reviewed by the Planning Commission, and a final vote has been taken, and then it moves to the city council for their approval, could Planning Commissioners then make comments on that item at the Planning Commission?
Well, you know, I know here commonly, planning commissioners will make, you know, public comments, you know, at, at city council meetings. But I think the important thing to consider is, is it within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission? You know, either, either now, sort of, or in, in the future, right? Is something that, that could come back? Or is it something within your subject matter jurisdiction? Then having a quorum of the Planning Commission, you know, make comments at a city council meeting could be problematic.
But a planning commissioner can make the comment?
A, a single planning commissioner making a comment is not a, at a city council meeting is not a violation of the Brown Act. But the more planning commissioners that comment, you know, then you're getting closer to the line. And, and also, this is not a meeting about due process. But as an aside, just, you also need to consider the, the due process implications of making a comment about, say, a development project that is going to come before the Planning Commission in the future. I'll leave it at that. Okay, I'm gonna move on. Okay, social media. So this bill came out a couple of years ago, and it is stricter in some ways than the Brown Act application to, say, this meeting of the Planning Commission. So I'll tell you what you, what I mean. So if a member of the Planning Commission, you know, is, answers a question from a member of the public, that is not a Brown Act violation in and of itself. Or is providing information to the public, or soliciting information from the public, which is not really what the Planning Commission does, but that is not a Brown Act violation. However, say, on a social media platform like Facebook, for example, if you have a planning commissioner posting something within your subject matter jurisdiction, and then you have two other members of the Planning Commission then commenting on that post, that is a Brown Act problem. But it goes even further. So this piece of legislation also considers unlawful one member of the Planning Commission, say, making a comment by, by one other member of the Planning Commission. So Planning Commissioner A makes a, you know, posts something on Facebook. If one other planning commissioner makes a comment on that, you know, likes it, you know, that is considered a Brown Act violation under this legislation. So it goes even further.
I have a question.
Yes.
So I'm very nervous about all this stuff, so I generally just don't post on social media about anything that might come before us. media about anything that might come before us. But I was curious about an example where you might have a planning commissioner who posts something on social media. Is the problem other commissioners liking or responding to it? Or is the problem even that they might read it? So for example, if a commissioner was about to post it about a project to Twitter and that's to the public, right? If another commissioner were to see and read that post, is the fact that they saw it a problem? Or is it really the issue is like the engagement, the clicking on it or responding to it?
So there's lots of issues that are wrapped up in that question, but I'll, I'll... And by the way, I will say it's good to be nervous, right? If you're nervous about social media and your role as a planning commissioner, that's a good thing. So it's really more about responding directly. So it's not a matter so much of, just strictly speaking about the Brown Act, the question isn't seeing the post, it's responding to the post. So there's no, you know, my advices, no comments, no likes, no emojis, nothing, okay? No, no smiley faces, no frowning faces, nothing. This is just about the Brown Act. There are also due process considerations for land use development projects. Due process is not on the agenda for the planning commission. That's subject of a whole other presentation, whole other training. But that is also separate and apart from this presentation, another reason not to post. Yes, Adam?
So is this, so discussion among members on social media, is this specific to matters that are within the legislative body's jurisdiction? So say I posted a picture of a new cat and other, a cat or something. So something not to do, has nothing to do with planning commission and multiple planning commissioners react to that. Would that also be a Brown Act violation? Or is it specifically about subject matter that's...
Yeah, so as the slide indicates, it's really more about what's in your subject matter jurisdiction. So I'm not saying don't post about your cat. Okay, under the Brown Act. And responding, liking your pic, the picture of your cat is also okay, because it has nothing to do with, with the business of the planning commission.
That's good, because I think we've all liked each other's cat pictures already.
Yeah. Cat liking cats is okay under the Brown Act. It, it's, you know, if you think, if you take a step back, you know, while joking aside and think about like the first slide, like what's the goal of the Brown Act? You know, it's about public transparency and for the public to understand what are its boards and commissions and what is its city council doing, right? About city business, not necessarily your individual pets.
So I have a question about all this. So just going, stepping way back to the issue of a planning commissioner posting about a project or a, yeah, a development or something that is within our jurisdiction. So that doesn't feel that right to me. That would make me nervous to just post it, even if I'm not friends, Facebook friends, I mean, real friends, sure. But Facebook friends, you know, even if I don't engage with them on social media at all, for me to like make a statement in advance of seeing the, the presentation and the, you know, the applicant's presentation staff, like, aren't we supposed to be sort of like unbiased before we receive the, I mean, maybe not before we receive the packet, but I guess I think of it almost as like we're supposed to be open and, and unbiased until we kind of hear the public comment, get the full, all of the information available to us and to the public. And so if I post about it in advance, let's say, that doesn't feel like I'm being open until the presentation?
Yes, no, so I think just to repeat your question, your question is, it's not necessarily a Brown Act question, it's a due process question. Because when you're acting on, when you're considering a land use development project, you're acting in a quasi judicial capacity. You're acting like a, like a court, like a judge. You're, you're taking action to approve or deny on a permit. So in that situation, you're exactly right. You have to be fair and neutral, unbiased, you know, taking, reviewing the planning commission packet, listening to the presentation by staff, applicant and the public. So I think for that reason, that's an important reason to not post about projects going before the commission. And that, by the way, is an example of me briefly responding to your question about something that's not on the agenda, which I'll get to in a moment. So in order to inform the public about what the planning commission and other boards and commissions are doing, we need to tell the public where is the meeting going to be held, when is it going to be held? And we have to establish a regular time and place for meetings for the, for the planning commission. You know, it's Tuesdays, you know, at 7:00 PM every other Tuesday. There are some exceptions to the requirement to meet within the jurisdictional boundaries of the city. This is not really going to come up for the planning commission, but they do exist by statute. Okay, so this will be very familiar to all of you. You need to describe what are the agenda items, what is the business to be transacted? The agenda has to be publicly accessible. It has to be on the city's website and it has to be posted 72 hours in advance for regular meetings and 24 hours for special meetings. Practically speaking, staff posts it 72 hours in advance even for, for special meetings because that is the city's practice to publish agendas. Really, it's more on Thursdays, so it's more than 72 hours in advance. So here's the example I was mentioning before. If something is not listed on the agenda, so there can't be any action or discussion about that item. Now, there's limited exceptions and these are very unlikely to occur for the planning commission, but you can briefly respond to, say, a comment by a member of the public. Or if something comes up in the course of discussion, you know, there can be a brief response to that. But if it turns into an extended conversation, then you will hear staff interject and say, hold on, this isn't on the agenda. Let's turn it back to what's actually on the agenda so that the commission can transact the business that the public expects. So as you all well know, the agenda packet includes staff report, various attachments, and when items, when packet items or really any information is distributed to a majority of the legislative body, then the city has to make that information available to the public as well. So there are some exceptions to notice and agenda requirements. Again, if there is some emergency, this is not going to come up for the planning commission, but say for the city council, an emergency really means like a dire emergency, some crippling disaster, some event of mass destruction is sort of the typical examples. You know, there, there can be, as the slide indicates, some brief responses to statements or questions by the public. Or, you know, there can be a request, if there are, if there's consensus, to have staff report back and notice it at a future meeting of the planning commission. That will happen from time to time. The, and need to take immediate action after posting of the agenda, that's very unlikely to occur and it has to come to the attention of the city, not, not the planning commissioner or the city council, not the legislative body, but it has to have come up, come to the city's attention after the posting of the agenda and there's some need to take immediate action. Again, very unlikely to occur. Okay, so a public comment is an essential part of the Brown Act. So for regular meetings, there is required to be a line item on the agenda for general public comment in addition to the right to comment on any item that's listed on that agenda. Now, it's special meetings, it's, the public comment is limited to the items that are actually on that agenda. You don't have to have a general public comment item for special meetings like this one. Also under the Brown Act, you can have reasonable time limits, as you know. Three minutes per public speaker is pretty typical, but as the number of speakers increase, it is lawful to reduce the amount of time per speaker. Speaker cards must be voluntary. You can certainly ask and we do ask, but there is a First Amendment right to anonymous speech. So if somebody declines to fill out a speaker card, they don't have to. And if somebody is commenting on Zoom and they don't list their true name, that is okay. You can comment as an anonymous member of the public. It's completely fine under the Brown Act and First Amendment. Yes?
Small pop thing that pops up in my mind. I've, I've occasionally heard, and not, not saying it's in San Mateo, but I've heard legislative bodies ask people to clarify if they live within the city limits of that city. I assume that's not, just like someone wouldn't have to put their real name. I assume they wouldn't have to say they live in the city.
So if someone doesn't wish to, you know, provide that specific information, there's a certain level of anonymity that's kind of associated with that. So, you know, if they, they can still speak without necessarily having to provide that information and, you know, the legislative body can just take that into consideration if, if somebody wishes to say, hey, I live in San Mateo or I live in this neighborhood. Certainly, they don't have to list their actual address during a broadcast meeting of the legislative body, but they can choose to provide what information they, they wish to provide. You can ask, but they don't necessarily need to answer. Okay, so we've, we've really covered this already for the most part, but, you know, again, just to emphasize, it's, it's important when you have an item on your agenda to really keep the discussion focused on that agenda item and not to stray into other areas. And there's multiple reasons for that. You know, one, it kind of, it makes the most use of your time, but also is for the benefit of the public. If the public knew that the planning commissioner was going to talk about not topic A, but topic B, then maybe more people would want to participate, more people would want to watch. You know, it's really about, again, about transparency. Now, that doesn't prohibit consensus of the planning commission, asking staff to bring an item back on a future agenda, you know, that happens frequently. But then that way, the public will know what's actually going to be discussed at a meeting of the commission. I thought I saw a question sort of being formulated in Commissioner Patel's mind. No, maybe not, okay. So the planning commission does not hold closed sessions, but it's good for a overall view of the Brown Act to understand there are exceptions to the general requirement that all meetings be open to the public. And the city council will hold closed sessions in all of these listed circumstances. But even for closed sessions, there is a right to make public comment before the closed session. So you will hear the city council ask for public comment and then the council will move to another room for the closed session. Okay, so this is an interesting slide because it refers to recently signed legislation, not yet in effect. But it, it provides, on the one hand, some level of flexibility for members of a legislative body to attend meetings remotely in two circumstances, emergency circumstances and just cause. But I just want to caution the commission, like this statute is complicated. There are a lot of hurdles to surmount before being able to avail yourself of, of these avenues. So for emergency circumstances, you know, there's a couple of typical, typical examples. If you have a family medical emergency, but still the legislative body has to actually vote on it in order to have that approved. And then another situation is just cause. For example, you have a child, need for childcare or to provide childcare, or you have some contagious illness. You know, there's an ability to attend remotely and it doesn't require, it's different from the traditional teleconferencing requirements. You don't have to notice the location on the agenda. The public doesn't need to have access to that location. So there's, there's some differences, but there are also limits on it too. Like a quorum has to meet in, in person. It can all, there are restrictions on the number of times it can be used in a year. This is interesting. Members who are participating remotely have to disclose if there's somebody, another adult in the room with them and the general nature of their relationship with that person. So there's, there's additional requirements too. So if you, if this, if this were to be used for a member of a legislative body here in San Mateo, then that's going to require some close coordination with staff, including the city attorney's office. So, but I just want to flag this for you, that it's, it's going to be available for a period of time, but it's not something to be kind of taken lightly. There, there's a lot of boxes to check before it can be used.
I have a question?
Okay.
I travel a lot for work. I have taken planning commission and general plan subcommittee meetings remotely before, disclosing the location, publishing the public notice, all of those things. What are the rules governing that versus this? Like, was that allowed under the emergency authorization because of COVID? Or do we always have the option to do that as long as we can disclose the location and publish a public notice?
So there's multiple issues kind of wrapped up in your question there. So under the traditional teleconferencing requirements, yes, you can do that. I mean, but there are, you have to just let staff know far in advance so that we can make sure all the Brown Act requirements are met. For example, posting the agenda at your location, making sure that your remote location is publicly accessible, making sure that it's actually listed on the agenda. There's also technological requirements too. So that, that's kind of part one. So part two is you may be thinking about AB 361, which is a statute that was passed like during, during COVID and it allowed for virtual meetings by the entire legislative body. It's basically what the city council and its boards and commissions were doing for some time and that has its own requirements. There has to be a proclaimed state of emergency by the state of California. And there also has to be, for example, state or local official recommendation for social distancing or circumstances where it would be imminent threat to health or safety for the commission to meet in person. And that also requires a resolution of the legislative body, really the city council, that they have to renew every 30 days in order to avail it, in order for the city to avail itself of AB 361.
Got it.
So that's part two of the answer. So part three is, you know, even under, under remote attendance, there is a reference, which I did not list on the slide here, to situations involving travel. So it's, but if, if there's that kind of situation you think will be, will arise for you, again, it's really important to just coordinate with staff well ahead of time so that we can make sure that all the Brown Act requirements are met and so that, you know, the meeting can, can be broadcast so that the public can comment remotely. There's a whole host of requirements that differ depending on the type of Brown Act teleconferencing option you're using. So now I'm done answering your question.
Sounds very helpful. Thank you.
There's no part four to the answer to your question. So don't worry. Okay, moving on. Okay, here's another interesting piece of legislation. So SB 1100, as indicated on the slide, the presiding member of the alleged body conducting the meeting can remove or cause to be removed an individual for actually disrupting a meeting, but you have to provide a warning to that person. a warning to that person that says, excuse me, you know, you're disrupting the meeting, please stop, or you may be removed from the meeting. And then that person can be removed if they do not, quote, promptly stop their disruptive behavior. Now, certainly you are not expected to personally remove them, but, you know, that, that option is allowed or will be allowed by, by statute. And also, this statute is in line with existing case law. You know, there, there are cases that have come out that refer to this actual disruption standard. So if somebody makes, say, an offensive gesture perhaps, like during their public comment, or maybe outside of the public comment portion of the meeting, there's no actual disruption of the meeting. You can still conduct your business. That may not warrant removal of that person. So I think you, you're going to want to, you know, closely coordinate with staff at the meeting, including the representative from the city attorney's office, in deciding whether or not removal is warranted. Fortunately, I think this is going to be an exceedingly rare circumstance, but just so you're aware of it, it, it does exist. Sort of by case law, the statute will go into effect on January 1st, 2023. And because the board and boards and commissions' procedures were also being amended, we added language in those procedures are ready to address the statute. So it's there. Now I'm done. So if there's any more questions, feel free to ask.
I have a question. It's helpful to, you know, go through this training and be reminded of all these specifics, but I wonder how much the general public knows about, you know, what, you know, standards were held to, and, yeah, I just, I feel like it would be helpful. I mean, there's not an opportunity, or there's not a place at this time where we reference the Brown Act requirements that we're, you know, adhering to during the course of our public meeting. But I almost wonder if that would be good. Not that necessarily people would stop and look it up, but I feel like it's, would be, it's almost like our responsibility to make sure that the public knows that.
Certainly, and you know, this meeting, for example, can, can help. But also, you know, in the, in the course of your planning commission meetings, for example, if somebody makes a public comment and wants the commission to address something, then, you know, you could say, well, you know, I'm sorry, but under the Brown Act, we're not allowed to, you know, add something to the agenda at this meeting in the interest of public transparency. You know, we can briefly respond, and then you can do so. But you, under the Brown Act, you cannot go further than that. So that, that's kind of a way to
Yeah.
tie the Brown Act into your meetings and have interaction with the public that may occur.
And the reason I thought of it was because sometimes in reading the comments from the public, it seems that people might be under the impression that we're meeting and deliberating outside of the public realm. I, I mean, people don't come out and say that directly, but I think sometimes it seems like there's a perception that, I, I mean, not about us specifically, but just in general legislative bodies. And so.
Well, I mean, I know, I appreciate the comment, but I think, you know, having these, these types of trainings, you know, which, by their very nature, they, they have to be public when we're, you know, training members of legislative bodies. I mean, I think that can perhaps help and kind of reinforce the importance the city places on, you know, Brown Act compliance, because it's required by law, of course, but also that it's something that's not taken for granted. It's continually emphasized
Yeah.
for the benefit of members of legislative bodies and the public.
Great, thank you.
Any additional questions?
I noticed on one of the slides, and I've seen this in previous trainings, that social events are unacceptable. It, it was listed as like social events or, or community gatherings, or some, something along those lines. What does that mean in particular? Does that mean like somebody's party at a house?
No.
Or, yeah?
Right. So that was on an earlier slide, but there are statutory exceptions to the Brown Act definition of a meeting. So there are social or ceremonial occasions. I use the ribbon cutting or groundbreaking example. There are community events, meaning community events that are open to the public, open and publicized, not somebody's party at their house. And there, there's other situations as well. But again, there's the big caveat that a quorum of that, of the legislative body cannot discuss amongst themselves matters within their subject matter jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, then at this time, looking at the time here, I want to see if there are any public comments as well. Has there been any members of the public that have wanted to speak about this?
No public comments.
Okay, great. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, we can adjourn this meeting and take a five-minute break before the start of the next meeting. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.